Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, September 22, 2020 at 6:00 PM. We are accepting public participation in our meetings. Members of the public can attend in person or watch or listen to the meeting live on Channel 4 at home, or they can go to LHCaz.gov/TV. We'll now have our invocation from Chaplain B. Evans. Chaplain, thank you for being here.
So nice to see you in person. God bless you all. Let's pray. Father God, you are a good, good Father, and you're a good God. And our pastor Jerry reminds us often that you're good all the time, and we do too tonight, Lord. Father, I know that there's lots of people who see their glasses as half-full, and there's a lot who see their glasses as half-empty, but your word tells us that our cup runneth over with blessings, and we are so grateful. We know, Lord, that you have a perfect plan for us. It never changes because you're the same yesterday, today, and forever. And Father, we trust you in this. Even our money says, "We trust God. In God we trust," and we thank you for it. Tonight, Father, will you bless all those who have come, those who sit on this council, not because they make big bucks, but because they love the people of Lake Havasu City? And we are so grateful, Lord. You love them, the council loves them, and we love them. So bless them tonight, Lord, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Havasu Abuse Victims Education Network, Haven. Mary Lou O'Connell, who is joining us via Zoom. Welcome, Mary Lou.
Hello, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
That was a struggle. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Mary Lou. We appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Mary Lou is on the screen. If you want to share a little bit about the organization, Havasu Abuse Victims Education Network, otherwise known as Haven.
Okay. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. My name is Mary Lou O'Connell. I'm the Director of Haven Family Resource Center. We are the local victim advocacy center. We have two components. One of them is victim services, where we respond to crimes such as domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse. We house the multidisciplinary team, which is law enforcement, child welfare offices, mental health, county attorney. Our victim services are very comprehensive. They go on scene to the court. We accompany police at the residence. We will meet the victims at the medical centers. So we provide crisis counseling, trauma therapy, court advocacy, case management, and forensics, which include exams and interviews. Our second component is community outreach and education. We house the Mojave County Child Abuse Prevention Council. So that's an education component, which provides families with resources and education and trainings. That's also our Food for Kids program. In partnership with the school district, we feed at-risk and homeless children. We give them kid-friendly food on the weekends. And October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so we will be hosting some events next month that will be announced on the radio and via social media. The goal is to provide the community with resources and to let the victims know that they are not alone. We are available 24/7 to help anyone in need. So that's Haven in a nutshell.
Great. Thank you again, Mary Lou, for being here, and thank you for all that you and your team do at Haven. It's so important to our community.
Well, thank you, and stay well, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Item four on our agenda is roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenny Koch?
Here.
Gordon Groot?
Yeah. Councilmember Groot, are you here or present? Well, maybe we can circle back.
Okay. Councilmember Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Donna McCoy?
Here.
Jim Dolan?
Here.
Vice Mayor David Lane?
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi?
Here.
All right. And it doesn't appear that Councilmember Groot is with us.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to item five. This is the Call to the Public. We are in a modified hybrid council meeting. We are open to in-person meetings, but we also have some Zoom technology. So a big thank you to Jerry Bracchimani in the back control room and Steve Blake for making this happen, so people can see us at all different areas. We have councilmembers that are joining us via Zoom, and then also councilmembers here live. We basically meet citizens and council where they're at in regards to the pandemic. So Call to the Public is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on any matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments are limited to three minutes. We have moved the podium to the center of the room for social distancing. There is a light indicator box over by Ms. Williams, our city clerk. Green means you have your three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. Again, you can talk about anything that is in the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. We ask that you stay within the time zone, or excuse me, the time constraints of that three minutes. And if you are here to talk about anything that's on the agenda, we encourage you to wait and talk to us during that agendized item, because we can have a two-way conversation back and forth. At Call to the Public, we will listen intently, but we can't have a two-way conversation because it's not on the agenda otherwise. You do not have to sign up to participate in Call to the Public, but we are, again, accepting public feedback here in person. And then we also have people that want to email cityclerk@LHCaz one hour prior to the meeting, and so we'll read those into the record as well. We'll start with those in person that have signed up, and again, you do not have to. So if you choose to speak after these speakers that have signed up, feel free to get up to the podium and do so. The first speaker will be Alita Anderson. Welcome, Ms. Anderson.
Mayor, city council. You've already heard that the masks don't work. You've heard that a million times. So today, I'm just going to tell you what the masks do do. Face rashes, emphytocho, thrush, whooping cough, decreased airflow, inflamed lungs, bad breath, more litter on our streets and in our lake, false sense of security aggravates COPD, PTSD, and any other anxiety conditions. We come before you. The U.S. Constitution, First Amendment, allows us freedom of speech, right to assemble and to petition the government, may complain, or seek assistance. And that's why we come before you when we come to these meetings. Everybody that's come before you has tried to be real respectful and not attacking you personally, because we know you have a lot of information that you're going through. A good city councilman studies, listens, and is willing to preconceived items or have their preconceived ideas challenged, you're open to that, open to the staff, open to the public, and we appreciate you doing that for us. We also know that an effective council member puts the law code in the citizens' first, regardless of personal bias, and that you achieve the highest level of adherence to your oath of office since we put you in there. So we do appreciate you listening to us, but we do still ask that the mask mandate be dropped so that our city can return to, as it was, a personal choice, freedom to choose what's right for us.
Thank you. The next speaker that signed up is Sarah Jones. Ms. Jones, welcome.
Hi. Hello, everybody. Thank you for your time tonight. So to my knowledge, we have seven cases out of our entire county of 230,000 people, and we still have the masks. So we really need to get this lifted. I know that Denise Burley is the one trying to keep this going, but you guys can get us out of this, and we want that lifted tonight. Also, this morning, I had a really nice conversation with Leo Burisachi, and he told me that I could go ahead and tell you and speak tonight, and he said that I could mention that he 100% supports ending the mask mandate and proclamation, and that the numbers don't justify it anymore. He said, "We must allow the people to decide what is best for them and their health, not the government." He also said that he has had a one-on-one with you, along with Barelli, Sonny, and he has talked to you on these issues, and he's urged you to end the proclamation now. We also urge you that as well. Want to know if you can get that done tonight? I ask every time. I don't see why we continue to have this. I don't see a need for it, and nobody else does either. Seven people, probably more than seven people, got a speeding ticket today in one day versus the seven people that are infected with the virus of 230,000 people. It's ridiculous. So I do have some other things to say. It is about a councilwoman who has made some comments. It's probably, it's very disrespectful. Just want to say, if anybody wants to make a comment to anybody about us regarding us, how we come up here and speak, don't call us fools. That was Michelle Lynn. Don't call us fools. If you're going to call us a fool, make sure that you do it in private and that it cannot be heard, overheard by other people. We don't appreciate that. We come here, when we invite other people to come and speak with you guys, ask them to speak with fact, not feeling, and not to attack you guys, and to be respectful. That's all we ask in return. But to call us fools, that is ridiculous. That is hurtful, because we have elected each of you. And, you know, Michelle, I've also donated to you when your car wreck happened with your five-year-old in 2015. I donated a lot of money to you on top of buying from your takeout to help you. And then Jenny, a couple weeks later, your daughter got in an accident, but because I donated so much to Michelle, I didn't have any left to donate to you. So I'm sorry to help your family, but I did pray for you and your daughter and your family. And I prayed for you too, Michelle, but I don't appreciate that when we've done a lot for our community, done a lot for each of you. That is how you, that is not how you treat us. So again, the Constitution, this is our personal property. We're grownups. We are not sick. You don't mask sick people. So end this tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. The next speaker is Greg Beaufort, Mr. Beaufort.
Good evening and welcome. Good evening. You should have copies of a letter that I asked to be entered into the record, and that I will also make available to anybody who wants a copy of it. My email address is gregbefford@gmail.com. Before I begin, I wanted to thank the mayor for meeting with me this afternoon, police chief yesterday, Councilman Dolan a while back. Just to have an open dialogue and for them to be willing to sit down and look at alternative perspectives is much appreciated, although we didn't agree on a lot of things. I want to thank you for, or at least taking the opportunity to do that. On the 18th of March this year, Mayor Shihi issued a proclamation declaring the existence of a local emergency. Arizona revised statutes give him the authority to do that when there are things like disasters, floods, civil disobedience, things of that nature. Proclamation specifically, as far as federal funding and state funding goes, is more or less a trigger event for those of you that aren't familiar with it. It's one of many that starts the flow of federal, state, and local funding. The governments of Kingman, Bullhead City, and Lake Havasu City all declared local emergencies within a day or two of a teleconference with the governor's office and one week prior to the first COVID-19 case appearing in Mojave County, which is Lake Havasu. One week prior, an emergency declaration or a local emergency was declared. ARS 26301 defines a local emergency as the existence of conditions of disaster or of extreme peril to the safety of persons or property within territorial limits of the city or county, which conditions are likely to be beyond the control of the services, personnel, equipment, and facilities of such political subdivision as determined by the governing body. Mayor Shihi's proclamation states his justification. It's proclaimed and ordered that in order to flatten the curve of the spread of COVID-19 virus, keep our hospitals from becoming overwhelmed, and maximize available funding, and this is important to listen to this language, public places where 10 or more people are gathered are asked to distance. Restaurants, retail, food facilities are asked to take measures. All businesses are urged to implement social distancing. Members of the public are urged to social distance. These strains on the hospital, these conditions, were not met at the time the proclamation was made, the local emergency proclamation was made, and to our knowledge, and anybody's knowledge, have not been met to date. According to Mayor Shihi, though, this has always been a voluntary measure. He stated so many times in his press release. So from the beginning, they understood that they had no legal standing with the proclamation, couldn't enforce it. It wasn't law. They didn't want to incur any liability associated with depriving citizens of their constitutional rights, understandable, and a confrontation with officers could result in unjustified violence. Would you please permit me an opportunity to continue?
Yeah, please, if you could just-
Thank you.
-finish your thoughts.
Yeah. So the question became, how best accomplish this? When the mayor and the city manager realized that they weren't getting the metrics that they needed in order to meet the compliance standards for funding, they decided to crank up the legal verbiage in the next proclamation that came out July 1st, once the governor gave them the authority to take over the mask mandates. The July 1 proclamation says, "On or about June 12, a study was published to demonstrate the effectiveness of face coverings." Could I please have a copy of that study? It says, "Whereas, per the authority mentioned previously, the mayor of Lake Havasu City has determined that there continues to be a risk to the safety of people and property." Notice the criteria has changed from conditions of disaster or extreme peril now to a risk. Those aren't the conditions that you wrote in the justification for the local emergency. It was always hospital strain, and you knew it, because you wrote it, and there is the justification for the proclamation. Those conditions never existed, and as far as we know, never have. Now, listen to the change in the language. Effective July 3, all individuals within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu are required. Businesses that interact with the public must require employees to wear face coverings. Face coverings are required when physical distances maintained. Private businesses shall enforce the present proclamation by asking any person falling to comply with the emergency proclamation to leave their premises. You know what the terms required and must means in legal context. I know you do, David. Those are legal mandates, and yet there was no law. Then when that didn't work, when they still weren't getting compliance from businesses, bars, gyms, things of that nature, officers were sent out to these businesses under the color of authority, and their intentions were good, and I'm certainly not pointing the finger at the police department here. They took direction from the city manager's office, went under the auspices of letting them know about the governor's proclamation and that they should, they're supposed to be one of those businesses that shuts down. Well, if you're a business owner and a police officer comes to your business and they remind you of the governor's proclamation, there's an inference there, or at least a fear that this is a police officer. If he comes, he's a law enforcement officer. I must be violating some law. If he comes back now, what's going to happen next? Can I be arrested? They don't know, but that's certainly the perception they're left with. And that's what under the color of authority means by law. After removing the goalposts many, many times here, first it was deaths, and now it's positive case numbers, which you know is an absurd and abstract metric that we'll never get out of, because they continue to require testing for everything now. You want to go have an optional procedure done? You have to have COVID tests first. You want to leave work or return to work? COVID tests. Now you want to go visit elderly people in a nursing home? COVID test first, within 14 days of going to visit them. Now they're limiting you to 15 minutes. I know that's not within your purview, but you have to remember, hospital strain was the metric to begin with, the impact on the hospital here. That was always the metric, no other metric should count. That was the one that you used in proclamation for your justification for issuing the local emergency. That's the metric that we should have been looking at, but we didn't, because there's incentives for people to not look at that metric. And at the same time, we're claiming that we had surge on hospitals, or their resources were impacted, nurses are being furloughed, we're accepting patients from out of the region, you know, all kinds of issues.
If you could wrap up your thoughts.
I will. Thank you. Thank you. I'm asking that the local proclamation, not the mask mandate proclamation, that's secondary. I'm asking that the local emergency proclamation that you declared in March 1, where you justified it by the impact on hospital resources, be rescinded. We're past that point. We're way past that. The only other thing I'd like to say is that I have evidence and testimony available to support the allegations that I'm making here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just for the record, there are no financial incentives the city has for the local state of emergency. The next speaker is Carrie Dagley.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you. My name is Carrie Dagley, and I own, have ice cream. And I would just, I serve, I mean, I sell prepackaged ice cream on my truck. And I want to know why I'm being harassed by a police officer that I can't go by Rotary Park and by the skate park and up above the channel in the driveway. He harasses me all the time, tells me he's going to cite me. He gives me some bogus B-code and all this. I told him, "Give me a ticket," but he won't. But he harasses me. He makes all the kids, I mean, the kids love it. I'm making them happy. It's hot out, and I just want to know what the laws are. Nobody's really told me, and here he's threatening me. So I'd like to know what the laws are, where I stand, if I can do it. If not, I better shut it down. And I just want, you know, I just want you guys to tell me what's right.
Yeah, well, thank you for being here this evening. Mr. Knutson, do you have a card, or if you guys can share information? Our city manager will reach out to you this week and get you that information and see how we can help you.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, because I've helped numerous people, you know, like an old lady that passed out, you know, and I helped her out. So I just want to make sure that I do the right thing.
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Knutson will be able to help you with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here.
All right. That concludes the speakers that have signed up for Call to the Public. However, you do not have to sign up, so if anyone else would like to address, yes, Sandy, if you'd like to come up, you just come into the microphone. I need you to state your name, first and last for the record. For the clerk, bring the mic to your face. Perfect, and welcome.
Hi, I'm Sandy Seedorf, and I just want to put a fatter boy and that a girl out to the community for Veterans United, Frankie's organization. I saw one of the council meetings where she put out that 51 homeless veterans were going to be without Thanksgiving dinner. I talked to her this morning. All that's been handled. I made a couple suggestions. I volunteered to help serve, things like that. I was on her committee years ago. It's all been handled, and I just wanted to say thank you to the community for helping her and the homeless out. And look for verbiage coming up in November for a turkey run. We're going to help some homeless and some unfortunate family members with their Thanksgivings, and we got some motorcycles and some shows and some things that are going to roar and feed our, not so homeless, but unfortunate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, just please make your way up to the microphone and state your first and last name for the record. Welcome.
Hello. My name is John Heinze. Okay. And I have a concern. Okay. When this thing all first started, okay, I was wearing a mask. I was doing what I was supposed to be doing, asked, you know, and several times, I about passed out. Okay? And I'm sure other people have dealt with this as well, you know? I feel as a person that a right should be our own decision, whether we wear it or not, you know? And it's not healthy to breathe your own air, you know, bound up like that. And I'm not speaking for myself, because I'm, I'm not, I have a medical condition, so I don't have to wear a mask. Okay? And I'm speaking for other people, you know? I'm backing other people here. Okay? And I just want to say that it should be up to the people, you know? It should be up to the people whether we wear it or not. And another thing, the stores should not be shoving masks at us as soon as we enter the door, you know? If we're not wearing a mask, it's our own decision, you know? And I just find that very rude with stores here in town, you know? Every time I enter Walmart, I get a greeter shoving a mask at me. You know, that's very rude. You know, I'm in there to spend my money, you know, not to be harassed, not to be belittled like that. Here's a mask. I don't need it. Thank you. You know, it should be our own decision. Leave us with our rights, whether to wear one or not. It's up to us. It's not up to the city or the governor. It's up to us, individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, make your way to the podium and just state your first and last name for the record, please.
My name's Bobby Cologne. My husband and I moved here almost five years ago after spending almost 47 years between the two of us in public service. I could not imagine what our first responders are going through, having to wear a face mask on these calls. I understand that your recommendation originally for wearing the mask mandate was not to overrun our hospital. However, we flew patients up from Yuma with COVID, which overran our hospital. That had nothing to do with the citizens here in Lake Havasu. If this condition is as serious as it's supposed to be, something I don't share with many is in July, I was diagnosed or told I had COVID, which I called total BS on. But yet, our health department took 29 days to contact me with a positive test result, 29 days. When they called me to tell me that my test was positive and asked me if I had any questions, of course, I had several, one being that this is so bad, why did it take 29 days to get a call? I have a four-year-old grandson waiting for open-heart surgery, and it took them 29 days to call me. Do you know what that felt like? Thank God he didn't get sick, and quite honestly, neither did I, nor did my husband, who's 63, or my daughter and son-in-law, who also live in the same house with me. As a matter of fact, nobody else got sick. But I kept watching the COVID Task Force updates every week, where it says how many cases, based on age, and how they were all linked together. And guess what my case was considered? Linked to all those cases that week. Now, how would they have known my case was linked to anybody else when they hadn't contacted me for 29 days? That's a major issue. And if you're basing your mask mandate off of things like the health department's recommendations or numbers you're reading, you might seriously question those numbers. Because I also have another friend. She waited 59 days in this town for her phone call, and her husband works in public service. 59 days. So how does that justify this mask mandate? I also have a daughter with three severe autoimmune disorders. Because of the mask mandate in this city, she had to stop working because she can't wear a mask. Thank God, her dad and I are fortunate enough that we can pay her bills for her, but how many in this town aren't that fortunate? We also have our own medical insurance. Nobody's paying our bills for us. If we want to wear a mask, that's our right. If we don't want to wear a mask, that should be our right, unless you want to pay our medical bills for us. Why do you get to make medical decisions for the rest of us? Because that's what's being done. Were you aware that today Scottsdale even dropped their mask mandate? They're a much bigger city than we are. Thank you.
Thank you. And for a point of clarification, Scottsdale did drop their mandate, but they're still abided by the county of Maricopa County's mask mandate. Next speaker, please make your way up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Dale Ray, and I'm a longtime resident of Lake Havasu for 48 years and pastor of a church, and I know the responsibility that- And I know the responsibility that you carry trying to look out for the citizens of Lake Havasu and I very much appreciate that. I do have my mask with me tonight, but I'm asking that you would relax or that you would release this mandate that's been issued. I think it's time. As a church, we've been back meeting since May the 17th, when we learned that churches were essential in Arizona, which I'm very, very grateful for. And so I'm asking, as I told our congregation from the very start, everybody's an expert in this, but I'm asking that you give us back the choice whether we would choose to wear it or not to wear it. And my grandbabies are asking that too, please. Thank you.
Thank you.[643.82][643.82](APPLAUSE).
Here I am again. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Like I said, the last time we were here, the biggest problem we have, Veterans United Arizona, is our homeless people cannot going to go into a grocery store, spend $5 on a mask to buy food. They need to eat. They don't need to be yelled at, screamed at, and degraded from different stores because they don't have a mask. And I for one don't wear a mask because I now have a, a medical issue because I was wearing a mask. And all these people here would love to hand you your lunch, but they're here respectfully and asking you and begging you to let us have our rights back. The mental health these issues are causing is astronomical. These kids being quarantined at home, abuse within the family has skyrocketed and it's really a lot for you guys to handle. But I want to thank you again for being here and please, please take the opportunity to appease the people that put you in office.
Thank you.[719.56][719.56](APPLAUSE). Would anyone else like to address city council on the Call to the Public? Yeah, just, yeah, make your way to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Kelly and I am the gym manager over at Anytime Fitness. I'm new to Havasu. I just want to be clear that my views don't personally reflect Anytime Fitness's views or my owner's views, but I just wanted to share with you guys how it is to be a manager in the gym setting right now. Vacation here for many years, recently moved here, relocated, took over this position right into a pandemic where the full city of Lake Havasu is wearing masks. In order to open that location, I filed four attestations in order to open. At every single time, there was a different set of guidelines that we were to follow. On, we were able to open the first time after filing two attestations on August 10th. At that time, it was, with those guidelines, it was recommend, it was required to wear a mask when you enter and exit and it was recommended while you were working out. By the end of that week, we were asked to close our doors. First off, a health inspector came by and we had a great conversation, but he left and I didn't feel that we needed to close. The next day, I had an officer come to our location, had another great conversation with him. He walked away as well and I thought, perfect, we're golden, we're good to go. The next, that evening, he called me back and let me know that the city manager requested that we comply and close our doors. I asked the officer what was going to happen if we didn't close our doors and we were told that we could face citations, et cetera. At that time, I asked the officer, he said, "I'm not telling you that you have to close your doors right this second, but you need to get them closed." And I said, "Well, how about tomorrow?" This was on a Thursday. I said, "How about tomorrow night at midnight?" He said, "Ah, that's kind of pushing it." Said, "How about 8 o'clock?" He's like still pushing it. And so we agreed on Friday at 5:00 and we complied and closed our doors on August 15th. Now, we've been at since after our fourth attestation, we were able to open on August 31st. We got approval through the county to open prior to be in the moderate category. Once we opened, we were required to wear masks. Throughout this entire time, since we've been open since August 31st, I've been spit on, I've been pushed, I've had people talk aggressively to me, I've had people inside the gym who were clearly unable to wear a mask. And it got to the point where I felt bad telling them that they had to leave, they had a medical condition. A week and a half ago, I emailed the health department gentleman who I came out the first time and asked him, "What is the ruling on medical exemptions for masks?" And he replied to me and let me know that they are not allowed to be in our location without a mask. Bottom line, there was no medical exemption. We're not an essential business. At that, that was on a Friday. And then the following Tuesday, the next Tuesday, I had the health department at our location. And at our location, he came in with a complaint and the complaint was not supposed to be open. That's what's on the complaint. Now, I was confused because the health department is the one who approved us and made us post the letter on our wall. And he wanted to do a full inspection. And I'm telling you that people need to be able to make the choice. We're not forcing them to come into our gym. We will happily suspend their membership. They need to be able to make the choice to wear those masks or not. Asking to remove those mask mandates. Thank you.
Thank you.[938.66][938.66](APPLAUSE). No, no, one, one opportunity you get. So let's get through. You get one opportunity. So a point of clarification is those attestation forms were the State Department of Public Health, the state of Arizona, and the county runs the health department. So those are, are areas that we, we're trying to work as well, but not within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Next person that would like to speak to us, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Jeremy Wazork, Havasuvian.
I'm sorry, can we get your name again?
Jeremy Wazork.
Did you, did you get that?
Havasuvian. I live here in this community.
Okay, great, welcome.
Um, I haven't worn a mask the whole time. Nobody really makes me. You have this proclamation that requires masks, but you can't enforce it. All you're doing is scaring small business owners into compliance and causing a confrontation within your community. Your duty is your community. You know the facts as well as we do. Small business owner, small business owner, small business owner. Hopefully financially, you'll see the repercussions for continuing this. You, I read somewhere that you were going to take their advice on whether to extend it again. You didn't take their advice last time extending it. You don't need their advice to end it. End it.
Thank you.[1028.81][1028.81](APPLAUSE). What then, John, if you want to make your way to the sta, I, no, I'm sorry, there's a, yeah. Just state your name for the record, please.
How you doing? John Yola. Nice to see all you folks again and again and again. So, you know, I've been a 40-year resident of Lake Havasu. I consider Lake Havasu the candy store of Mojave County, right? And Havasu's always been the leader in Mojave County as far as I'm concerned. And now I hear that Bullhead City has either taken the mandate off or what did they do? Is that what they did? Took their mask mandate off?
They had a proclamation of their own that their council voted not to extend.
To remove it?
Last Tuesday, yes.
Yes, so they removed it. So now we're not the leaders no more, you see? We're the followers.
Depends who you ask.
So, um, you know, when we talked about, you know, the hospital being full of COVID patients and all that, I know somebody else mentioned it. It wasn't a lie to say it was full of COVID patients, but we know now that most of them were from Yuma that were shipped up here. And so that definitely skews our numbers because it looks like we have COVID patients all over when we really didn't have the amount that, you know, we were told. So as you know, I kind of lead up this group called Zero Tolerance Lake Havasu. And everybody's doing a really good job not wearing a mask. So we go out without them. I go everywhere without my mask. If somebody asks me, I go, "I have my mask right there" and I put it back in my pocket and I keep walking. But you know, it's getting to a conflict point in a lot of places. And we want to avoid that because people are starting to get more and more aggressive. And maybe not in Lake Havasu as much, but if you watch videos like we all do, you can see people are getting hit and everything else for not wearing a mask. It's just out of control. Anyway, last but not least, I just want to know what date can you make a decision to lift this mandate? Can you make that at any particular time? You can?
Night.
Yeah, it can, it can be made. Right now, it's set to expire on October 15th.
Okay, all right. But you can do it at any time. Okay. That's what we need to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.[1190.03][1190.03](APPLAUSE). Next speaker, if you just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record. Good evening and welcome.[1198.16][1198.16](APPLAUSE). I need, I need you to state your name and then also you're addressing the council, please. So just stay, stay faced forward. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't leave you out. My name is Elizabeth Companion.
Elizabeth, if you can just bring the microphone down for the folks at home.
Oh, surely.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Companion. Mayor Sheehy, it's very nice to meet you.
You as well.
I've only been a resident for seven years, not 49. I know you all work very hard, what you do, and we appreciate what you do. I'm concerned for my husband's health. He has asthma, he has COPD, and I don't like to see him wear a mask. I'm very sad when my grandson comes home from school and he tells me, "Grandma, school's not the same anymore. Nobody wants to talk to him. Even the teachers shy away from him. It's not the same and it's hurt, hurts my heart." And I just want you guys to know that. Thank you.
Thank you.[1257.83][1257.83](APPLAUSE). Would anyone else like to, yes, so just please make your way to the podium and state your first and last name for the record.
My name is Bob Bindels. I'm a local resident. I have a question. Why is it that you folks, as well as other officials, abide by skewed numbers, just like the story about the Yuma people coming up here? Why do you tolerate those kind of numbers to inflict controls upon your people? That's all I want to know.
Thank you.[1299.58][1299.58](APPLAUSE). Would anyone else like to address the city council at Call to the Public?
Sure. How would you be an answer?
Yeah, we can't have a two-way conversation, I'm sorry, during Call to the Public, but anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the in-person Call to the Public and I'll turn it over to Ms. Williams, the clerk, to read the comments that we received via email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Mayor and city council, we received the first comment on September 21st with a subject line of LHC Council Meeting, September 22nd. Mayor Sheehy and council members, I am directing my comments primarily to Mayor Sheehy as the council members don't seem to have a voice regarding the mask mandate debate. Mr. Mayor, you say that you deferred to public healthcare experts regarding the effectiveness of face masks. Well, let's examine the credibility of some of these experts. Early on in the pandemic, the CDC, WHO, and Surgeon General, and Dr. Fauci all publicly stated that face masks were ineffective against the virus and that people in general, healthy people in particular, shouldn't wear them. After they all changed their position on masks, they said that they deliberately lied to the American people in order to protect limited supplies of PPE for healthcare workers. So now we're supposed to believe what self-admitted liars tell us and trust that they won't lie again? Then we see Robert Redfield on TV recently saying that face masks are more effective than a vaccine in fighting the virus, contradicting what he stated just a few months ago during a House hearing. Was that to double down on the masks-up narrative or to downplay expectations of a vaccine which has been hyped for months that they know can't possibly be delivered in a timely manner, if at all? Most likely both. In any event, Mr. Mayor, if the CDC changes its position again a month from now, will you take the time to critically analyze what's being said and put into perspective with the larger picture? Or will you simply nod in agreement and quote the last mantra? This debate proves the adage that it's easier to fool someone than it is to convince them they've been fooled. There's no shame in being deceived by professionals. The shame is in allowing it to continue. The reason I fight so passionately against the mask mandates is because it's a puzzle piece of a larger, more terrifying picture. George Orwell was not only a brilliant novelist, he was a prophet. If you've never read the book 1984, encourage you to do so. If you have, you need to read it again because, believe me, my friend, those pages are alive and we are living in them. In 2005, Dr. Fauci knew that hydroxychloroquine was an ineffective inhibitor of coronavirus based on research conducted by the National Institutes of Health, of which he is still the director. Please note, if you Google this claim, the only search results you'll find have labeled it as a debunked myth by so-called fact-checkers. If you use a more open-based search engine such as DuckDuckGo, you'll find them. Yet back in April, when President Trump touted the drug as a potential treatment for COVID-19, Dr. Fauci and others were quick to discredit not only the drug, but thousands of doctors worldwide that have described, I'm sorry, prescribed HCQ for their COVID patients and praised it as safe and effective drug for treatment, used as prophylactic and indeed a cure for COVID-19. In Uganda, a nation of 46,34,419 people, they have seen a total of 5,123 cases and 80, 58 deaths from COVID-19. Why the low numbers? Ugandans eat hydroxychloroquine like candy as a prophylactic for protection against malaria. The fact that it is also effective against coronavirus was just as unexpected side effect. Hydroxychloroquine was approved for use by the FDA in 1955, but as of June 15th, 2020, that same FDA revoked its own emergency use authorization for HCQ as a treatment for COVID-19, citing a possible risk of heart attack. So now suddenly HCQ is dangerous. This was a coordinated attack, coordinated attack on a safe, effective, and inexpensive drug by bureaucrats and the media. One can speculate about the motivation for this campaign of disinformation, but one thing is undeniable, it was deliberate. So what changed? The science or the politics? Based on the fact that Google and YouTube have censored everything related to this, I propose that it wasn't the science. If everyone had just ignored the so-called experts back in April and state governors hadn't placed restrictions or outright bans on HCQ and allowed healthcare providers to prescribe HCQ as they saw fit without intimidation and restrictions placed on them from state medical and pharmaceutical boards, this virus would likely be behind us and we wouldn't still be having this conversation in September. The point being, this is why I don't lend much credence to anything politicized medical experts say and frankly, I don't understand how anyone could based on their track record. They're merely bureaucrats and political figureheads with an agenda, cleverly disguised as public health professionals. And if you're basing your decisions on their guidance, I'm afraid you're living in a dangerous echo chamber. It's a shame you aren't talking to any of the numerous healthcare professionals who disagree with your opinion on face masks. Please listen to both sides and give them equal weight. Face masks do much more harm than good, period. Along with many others, I have been pleading my case to you for months, providing facts and numbers to support our claims, but our concerns continue to fall on deaf ears. At this point, I can only presume that you're more concerned with keeping federal funding flowing than you are about the health and emotional well-being of our fellow citizens or you're simply following the herd. Since July 1st, when you issued your proclamation, you have unilaterally controlled the narrative on face masks in Lake Havasu City, ignoring citizens' complaints and excluding input from the city council. As you know, September 15th, the Bullhead City Council voted to let their mask mandate expire. It's time for Lake Havasu City to follow suit and follow our voices to be heard. Our founders took great care in crafting the constitution to ensure that no elected official would ever have complete and, a complete authority, but state and city officials have exploited this crisis as a justification for granting themselves unlimited powers indefinitely, which is blatantly unconstitutional. This is not how our system of government is supposed to work. I urge you to put the topic of rescinding the mask proclamation up for a vote before the full city council. One day, the truth behind this pandemic will be known and on that day, we will all be judged based on the choices we make today. For the future of our children and our country, I pray that we choose wisely. Submitted by Ron Danielson. Second comment was received on September 22nd with a subject line of "Support the Mandate of Masks." To the ma, to the council and mayor, I would like this read at your meeting, that I am supportive of the mandate to wear the mask in public places that has been put in place by the city council and mayor. I do believe this has helped our community and our people in curbing the COVID-19. I know people with, have trouble with change, but let, be positive in this change, we will get through this. But everyone needs to step up and be supportive. I have been a resident of Lake Havasu for 32 years and I give my support on the decision to the city council and mayor for trying to make Havasu a safe place. Thanks for hearing me out on this matter. Submitted by Lavina Pettigrew. The third comment was received on September 22nd with a subject line of "LHC 922 2020." Mayor Sheehy and council, we are not in a health crisis. There is no justification for business and school and recreation shutdowns here or mandatory wearing of face coverings in public. Let's follow the money. Jean Bishop says there's- Let's follow the money. Gene Bishop says there's been quite a bit of monies that have been available to Mojave County that would not be available without this emergency order. How many of your city council members, mayors, governors, and politicians are business owners who made money from the PPE, Paycheck Protection Program, which is COVID-19 money? COVID-19 federal financial aid will likely be tied for years to a county's or state's positive tests, hospitalizations, and death tolls. It is about the money, money over humanity. The governor's order says that a city may adopt and enforce policies requiring wearing a mask. Mayor Sheehy, you choose yes, which meant Havasu got a lot of money. In fact, according to the Havasu newspaper, the city got $6,413,699. The city set aside $250,000 for businesses and then paid United Way $20,000 to disperse it. The $20,000 kept by United Way is money that could have been helped, could have helped keep one or two more small businesses afloat. The city should have kept the distribution of the money in-house to maximize its potential, which meant the city actually gave businesses $230,000, not $250,000. United Way ended up getting more money than all of the businesses in town. This is just outrageous. This leaves a balance of $6,163,699. Where is that money and why couldn't you help your citizens more? That's a lot of money. Mayor Sheehy and council, I would like a full accounting of how this money was spent. As a tax-paying citizen in this city, I believe I am entitled to get that answer and I believe it should be public record. Yelp just said 60% of all businesses that closed due to COVID-19 won't reopen. We won't know the full extent of the damage in Havasu for at least a few years, but when the numbers come out, I hope that you, Mayor Sheehy, and every member of this council take some degree of responsibility for their failures since you helped put them out of business due to your draconian measures and money grab. Maybe you can all dip into your personal savings and help these struggling families out since I bet you have all found a way to keep going through this crisis. As David Ike says, it is these businesses that have been hit in the head, it is these businesses, it is like these businesses have been hit in the head with a baseball bat and now they're being allowed to slowly bleed to death. Many are dipping into their personal savings or creating more debt in an effort to survive when they will ultimately fail away. There's a growing group of us looking into bringing legal action against the council collectively and each council member individually for the possible unlawful and unconstitutional state of emergency and proclamation. It is possible that businesses could sue for punitive damage also if it is established that your state of emergency and proclamation was unlawful and unconstitutional. It would be great to see these businesses recoup some of their losses if that were the case. Representative Kelly Townsend said, "How many more treasures will Arizona lose so we can continue to get federal dollars while under the state emergency?" It is indeed all about the money, Mayor Sheehy and council. You should be fighting like the hell for the people who put you there. You work for us as you seem to have forgotten. Havasu was just fine without the COVID money. You should have said no, but you chose money while letting the businesses suffer. Submitted by Janet Grippy. This comment was submitted on Tuesday, September 22nd with a subject line of "Call to the Public." Dear Mayor and City Council, I hope that my thoughts can be shared during the Call to the Public at today's city council meeting. I am writing in support of the current mask proclamation. I work in the medical field and can say with certainty that masks do make a difference. A study by Booth found that wearing masks can reduce the spread of viruses by a factor of six times. If something as simple as wearing a mask went in a business can have a six-fold reduction in viral spread, how can we not? I will admit that I do not like wearing the mask myself, but it is what we need to do for our community. We just started opening things back up again and I think that the current extension of the proclamation makes sense. I am hoping we can put COVID-19 behind us and go back to our lives without masks. We aren't, we just aren't there yet. Thank you for what you are doing to keep our community safe and to keep our economy moving forward. Submitted by Mary Jackson. This comment was received on Tuesday, September 22nd with a subject line of "Proclamation." Dear Mayor Sheehy and representatives, my name is Cheryl Coachever. I am a resident here in Havasu for 23 years. I am here to say that I am all for the proclamation of wearing masks. I do not go anywhere without my mask, even if they say it is okay not to have one on. I only go to places that are outdoors. It is just like smoking. You cannot smoke in buildings. You need to be 20 feet away, I believe. You smokers did not like that, but you did it anyways. I have a 26-year-old son that works as a manager at a sports business here in town. He wears a mask, he wears a mask all day, does not like it, but he says that it is my job and I need to listen to my boss if I want my job. He has run into very rude people that do not want to wear a mask. He just says, "Sorry, store's policy. You need to leave the store or put on a mask. Thank you." They do not like it, say a few words and leave. It is not easy for anyone, but until they come up with a vaccine, we need to do this for everyone's sake. People stop complaining and just do it. Stop the spread of this virus, please. Submitted by Cheryl Coachever. This comment was received on Tuesday, September 22nd with a subject line of[950.78][950.78]"Please Read at the Call to the Public Tonight, Tuesday, September 22nd." To the Lake Havasu City Council and Mayor, I want to thank you for implementing the mask mandate in Lake Havasu. I truly feel it has helped control our cases and bring down our positivity rates. Being an essential worker, it is important to keep me and my family safe from COVID-19, one of those family members being my 65-year-old mother who is helping me homeschool my three children. I have visited neighboring communities and they all are complying with their own city mask mandates. It's not a big deal. You only need to wear the mask when you cannot social distance yourself from others. It is not rocket science. Our COVID cases went down once we started the mask mandate. I want to keep my favorite restaurants open, be able to visit my favorite places to shop, get my pedicures and hair dyed, and get my children back to real school. Please do not revoke the mandate. I do not want our numbers to grow out of control again. Submitted by Christina Ward. This comment was received on Tuesday, September 22nd with a subject line of[1017.61][1017.61]"To Be Read at the Call to the Public, 922 20 Mask Proclamation." To the mayor and city council members, I wanted to thank you for your efforts to keep our city safe. I believe we are headed in the right direction as our percentage of cases seem to be lowering in Mojave County. I believe this reasoning is because of the mask proclamation. I was able to come back to work after the proclamation went into place. I am happy to be able to go out to eat at my favorite restaurants in Havasu and shop at my local, at my favorite local shops that were able to open with the mask proclamation. Again, your efforts to keep our city safe are appreciated. Submitted by Joelle Oliver. And that is all the written comments for Call to the Public.
All right, thank you, Ms. Williams. So another point of clarification is regardless of the local mask proclamation by state requirement, gyms, fitness centers, bars, restaurants, and theaters would be required to have masks as well as private businesses that so choose. So again, thank you everyone for your comments. Thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing your viewpoints with the council and myself. I appreciate it. And we'll now move on to item six on our agenda, the consent agenda. Do any members of the council want to remove any items for separate discussion? No?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda, including the correction to item 6.1.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember McCoy. I believe for the record, I believe Councilmember Groat has joined us now.
For the record, Councilmember Groat was here for the whole meeting. He just couldn't unmute his phone. He had to launch the app. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, perfect. Welcome. All right, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Aye.
This is Councilmember Groat. Aye.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven, correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 7.1 is announce vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and city council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one alternate pilot member. Board of Adjustment, four regular members, and three alternate members. Citizens interested can pick up a packet at City Hall and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 7.2 is the city manager's report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start off the city manager's report with recognition of CERT Week. September 21st through September 25th, that's this week. CERT is our Community Emergency Response Team and there, we have the green shirts in the crowd that are part of that CERT team. We'd like to celebrate and honor our volunteers. Mayor Sheehy, you have a proclamation to present to the CERT team. And Chief Poloffus, Division Chiefs Rand and Hartman have a plaque to present to the team in an effort to show a small piece of our gratitude to the dedicated men and women who are hard for the betterment of our community. The CERT team provides support at fire scenes and multi-agency operations, provides basic first aid and standby at events, and assists in community programs. So Mayor, at this time, I'd encourage you to present the proclamation to the, to the CERT team.
Excellent.
And would ask for, for the fire team to come up as well.
Chief, do you want to start with yours and then I'll do the proclamation?
You know what, Mayor, I'll allow you to go first.
All right, so we're gonna do a proclamation. Bob, thank you to everybody for all of your hard work. CERT is one of the best-kept secrets in Lake Havasu City. The work that you guys do for us is we could not do without you and your help. So thank you so much. It's our honor to do this. Today, we're doing a proclamation from the office of the mayor proclaiming Community Emergency Response Team Week, CERT Week, September 21st through September 27, 2020. Whereas the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, is a national program that trains individual volunteers and basic disaster response skills such as fire safety, light search and rescue, and team organization. And whereas CERT offers a consistent nationwide approach to volunteer training and organization that professional responders can rely on during disaster situations, allowing them to focus on more complex tasks. And whereas Mojave County is the first county in Arizona to use CERT members during emergencies, representing Lake Havasu City, Bullhead City, City of Kingman, Mojave Valley, Golden Shores, Golden Valley, Cathedral City, and Meadview. And whereas the Lake Havasu City CERT team consists of 38 volunteers, ages 30 to 70-plus, from all walks of life, providing first aid services at over 20 local events per year, supporting firefighters while they're working ablaze and processing rehab. And whereas Lake Havasu City CERT reports to fire scenes to switch out air packs and monitor the health of firefighters and provide personal restorative measures such as providing sports drinks, coffee, snacks, cooling buckets and cold towels, and shady places to sit during hot weather, always keeping a watchful eye on the physical conditions of the working firefighters. And whereas Lake Havasu City CERT donates over 2,000 hours a year to community service and have installed over 500 KnoxBox rapid entry systems around town that provides immediate entry into a home in case of emergency. And whereas the Lake Havasu, Lake Havasu City is proud of our CERT team and looks forward to many, many, many more years of partnership. Now therefore, I, Cal Sheehy, Mayor of Lake Havasu City, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of September 21st through September 27, 2020, as CERT Week in Lake Havasu City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council. Bob, the Fire Department wants to present you a plaque with the CERT team. First of all, coming from the Midwest, I am so honored to have a CERT team of your caliber and your dedication. It is amazing and I appreciate, appreciate, and the Fire Department appreciates all your support with your leadership, Bob. The CERT team is on the map, especially here in Arizona, and we support you because you support us. So on behalf of the Fire Department, we proudly present this award in recognition of CERT Week. We truly appreciate your dedication and hard work in making our community a better place. From the Lake Havasu City Fire Department. Again, all of you, we appreciate everything you do and we support you just like you support us. So Bob, thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you. Bob, you have a couple words here?
I'll just, quick, real quick. You want me to use this one or this one?
Either one.
Okay, I can, I can do this. The main reason that we have such a good team is going back 15 years ago, we have got the complete support of the Fire Department and of the city council and the mayor. And I would like to point out, the person I report to is Division Chief Jeff Harren. Scott Hartman is the Fire Marshal and our new Fire Chief. And we just have a total support from these people, so it's really easy to do the job that we do. And we also introduced Chief Dan Doyle to rehab recently. We rehabbed the SWAT team for five hours when the temperature was 120 degrees. So thank you very much.
Yeah, so if the CERT members want to come up and council, if you'd like to come around the dais and join me as well? And we'll get... We'll go out just in front and try to cover this up here. So come on this, come on this side of the podium. And we'll cover it up with all of our green shirts. And everyone knows how to do it, so tall in the back, shorter up front, squeezed together. Yeah, Councilmember-elect Moses, if you want to join us as well? Okay, yeah, thank you everybody again. Thank you for your hard work. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you for all your...
Yes, yes, yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you. You too. Awesome, sir.
Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you. Yes. Tim Murray, Tim, yes, good to see you. I'll talk to you.
Now, now that we're back at it, we'll again thank you to CERT for all your hard work and we'll turn it back to you, Mr. Knutson.
Yes, great. That's fantastic. Thank you to Bob and the CERT team. And rumor has it that we have started that process for the procurement of that new vehicle. So that's something that is underway and will be completed in this budget year. Next, I'd like to share two amazing stories that involves two of our amazing city employees. I'm proud to recognize these employees tonight and share with you their outstanding customer service efforts. Clarence Casetta, otherwise known affectionately as Lolly. He works in our Parks Division and helped locate some lost parents on September 12th in Rotary Park. Lolly is performing his afternoon tasks when he noticed a child that looked lost. He was able to contact our police department and, and who assisted him in driving around and finally locating the lost parents. So thank you, Lolly, for going above and beyond and doing what you do to better our community. And then on the right here is Jamie Wilson. Mr. Wilson is an employee within our Water Division and he took the initiative to stop and make a difference. He noticed a vehicle on the side of the road on his way home after hours after work. He also noticed that something was not right about the situation. He located an elderly male that had fallen and was suffering from heat exhaustion in the bushes on the side of the road. Acting Captain Marty Port with LHC Fire Department says, "Without Jamie's intervention, the elderly person's outcome would have been much different and could have been fatal." Simply amazing, guys. Thank you for all your efforts to make Lake Havasu City a better place. Brought to us by Anderson Toyota, the Havasu Youth Advisory Council, where there's a partnership that includes the Lake Havasu Chamber Foundation for Education and Leadership, otherwise known as CFEL, and they're gonna be putting on a Halloween Family Drive-In Movie Fundraiser Event. So a drive-in movie. And this will be held on October 29th at 7:00 p.m. And the movie that night, in coordination with Halloween, will be Hocus Pocus. It'll be held at the Friends of the Fair Rodeo Grounds off of Dub Campbell Way at Sarah Park. The cost is $20 for a carload. So pile them in and take them down to Sarah Park, acting responsibly and safe, of course. The audio will be provided through the FM radio waves and contactless concessions are available before and during the event. Springburg McAndrew Financial Services, AZ Auto Spa, Camel Cove One Stop, Chabones, Bashes, Food City, and the Lake Havasu City Police Explorers all assisted in making this event a reality. So thank you to everybody there. The proceeds from this event will go to the local, local Havasu Community Health Foundation, Food Bank, and the Chamber Foundation for Economic and Leadership Programs. For more information or to get a ticket or to donate, please contact our very own Jerry Bracamonte in, in the office at 928-453-4141. So that looks like fun. The 2020 Census Deadline is September 30th and that's just a few, a few days away. Currently, the response rate in Lake Havasu City is at 63.3%. So the federal funding to our state and city is directly affected by the census numbers in our area. We have a low number and we would like to, like to increase it. As it stands, this means less funding for so many things like infrastructure, road repair, special education for students in need, grant programs for small businesses, food and housing for low-income and elderly residents, just to name a few. There's many, many more. It's not too late and there's still time to respond online or by phone. On the screen, you'll see the, the website there is 2020census.gov or the phone number is 844-330-2020. This will take about five, five to seven minutes to complete. It's a few short questions, so we encourage all of our residents to complete the census and be counted for Lake Havasu City. And this Friday, we'll have a census employee will be at City Hall in the lobby. She'll be there from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and she can assist with any questions you might have or even assist with completing that census form. So let's not pass up this once-in-a-decade opportunity to bring state and federal funding to Lake Havasu City for our critical local services. And finally, sharing some information over the course of the last several months, this information is, is provided by the Mojave County Public Health Department, showing the total number of COVID cases since, since March for Lake Havasu City is 1,093. That's as, as of yesterday, September 21st. This chart displayed shows a trend from month to month of reported cases in Havasu. Of the 1,093 cases, a total of 1,065 have completed the quarantine. So as of yesterday, September 21st, there are now 28 individuals that are currently in self-quarantine, just in Lake Havasu City. Recent reported low case, case counts and deaths have been very positive for Lake Havasu City over the last several weeks, thanks to the efforts of the, thanks to the efforts for those in our, in our community. When our reported cases are low, it means our residents are healthy and safe, capacity is available at our hospital, and allows our businesses to remain open and operate responsibly, responsibly, in accordance, of course, with the directives provided by Governor Ducey. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. All right, we will move on to item eight, which is our public hearings. We'll start with 8.1, which is a Series 7 Beer and Wine Liquor License for Innovative Health and Wellness Center, 297 Lake Havasu Avenue South, number 200. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, Summer Tildrum has applied for a Series 7 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Innovative Health and Wellness Center located at 297 Lake Havasu Avenue South, number 200. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 7 Liquor License. Happy to answer any questions and the applicant is also available on Zoom if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions of Ms. Williams? Any questions of the applicant that is on, joining us via Zoom? All right, no questions of the applicant. This is a public hearing. We will open this up to the public. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none in person, we'll close the in-person call to the public and we did not receive any written comment to cityclerk@lhcaz.gov via email prior to the meeting. So the public hearing is closed. I'll bring them back to Council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan.
It's funny as I look at it, beer and wine is the key to health and wellness. I knew it, I knew it. I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series 7 Beer and Wine Bar Liquor License for Innovative Health and Wellness Center, 297 Lake Havasu Avenue South, number 200.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. And Councilmember Groh?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item 8.2 is adopt resolution number 20-3445 opposing the transfer of fourth priority Colorado River water from GSC Farm LLC to the town of Keen, excuse me, town of Queen Creek. Ms. Gary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In August of 2019, GSC Farm and the town of Queen Creek submitted a request proposing to transfer 2,083.1 acre-feet of GSC's Arizona Fourth Priority Colorado River Water entitlement to the town of Queen Creek. The water is currently held under contract directly between CSG and the United States Bureau of Reclamation and is used to irrigate approximately 485 acres of farmland in the Sebola Valley Irrigation and Drainage District in La Paz County. Under the proposal, the 485 acres of land will be retired from agricultural use and the 2,083.1 acre-feet of Colorado River water will be transferred to Queen Creek. Queen Creek proposes to use the water for municipal uses within its service area located in Maricopa and Pinal Cones Counties. This proposed conveyance would change the place of use and the type of use associated with the existing Colorado River Water entitlement. Concluding a 13-month process, in a letter dated September 4th, 2020, the Director of the Arizona Department of Water Resources recommended that the Secretary of Interior approve a partial transfer, so that's 1,078.1 acre-feet per year, of GSC's Fourth Priority Colorado River Water entitlement to Queen Creek, based on the need to retain water to serve a future housing development on the property without negatively impacting other Colorado River users. The Secretary of Interior is responsible for making the final decision, including performing any National Environmental Protection Act compliance actions. This recommendation by the Director reverses a long health policy regarding Colorado River allocations in Arizona, which holds that 164,652 acre-feet per year of fourth priority water, of which GSC's entitlement is part of, is reserved for the use on main stem of the Colorado River, which are the communities and users located adjacent to the Colorado River for agricultural, municipal, and industrial uses. Permanent transfers of water entitlements from smaller river communities to benefit urban areas which have alternative water supplies available to them sets a bad precedent and places the local water supplies and economic future of rural jurisdictions at risk. The Council is urged to adopt the proposed resolution opposing this permanent transfer, which will be transmitted to the Secretary of Interior. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Gary. Are there any initial questions of, of the Council? So this matter is, was before the Mojave County Water Authority, which I serve as the council liaison on that board. Last Tuesday, the Mojave County Water Authority voted on a similar resolution to oppose it. We have long opposed permanent water transfers off the main stem. As a community, obviously, water is paramount to everything we're gonna do in, in the desert. We're disappointed in the Director from Arizona Department of Water Resources and his recommendation to the Secretary of Interior and his actions. We testified at some public hearings they had, specifically, Councilmember Groh to myself attended one in La Paz County and testified to this matter. But again, we oppose all permanent water transfers from, from the main stem and urge the Council to support this resolution. Any questions before we open up the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none in person, we'll close the in-person public hearing and we also did not receive any comments on this item via email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov prior to the meeting to read into the record. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to Council. Yes, Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion.
Please.
I move to adopt resolution number 20-3445 opposing the transfer of fourth priority Colorado River water from GSC Farm LLC to the town of Queen Creek.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
And Councilmember Groh?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 8.3 is approve the purchase of a Starcraft Starlight Ford Transit bus and an Arbach low-floor bus from Creative Bus Sales utilizing Arizona State Contract. Mr. Cypress?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jess and everybody else here at the school theater. I have a short, five slide, 421, which is trying to give an explanation of this, as well as the general, you know, where they are with the transit regulations.
Is he, is, is he on now?
Can you hear me now?
I could hear him before, sorry, he wasn't sure. Yeah. Yeah, that spot never wants to work. Oh, yes.
Hello? Okay. So we're gonna go over this PowerPoint deck real quick just to give an explanation of the two capital items that we're purchasing and then I'll give a quick update on where we are as far as the implementation plan. We are gonna purchase two buses from Creative Bus. We have a state contract listed here that we're still current in agreement with them, so we have this piece ready to go. The first bus we're buying is called a Starcraft Starlight Ford Transit and this is actually something new and it actually fits the need that I feel that we're gonna need to expand and start our service again. This is considered a narrow-body bus. So where the other buses are about 96 inches wide, 95 inches wide with the cutaway bodies, this one's only 84 inches. And this particular bus here is almost exact one that we're gonna get. It holds 14 people and one driver, so we do not need a CDL, so the driver should not need a CDL for it. And it's only 21 feet long, so it's perfect for going up and down Mesquite, Swanson, Macala, Tacoma. And it doesn't take a lot of room when it's stopped on the, on the high, on the streets to pick people up. So it's a, it's a newer idea that they came out with. Currently, we have a, one of the Have Some Mobility buses that we actually purchased back when Hat was around. We use that still for our lift passengers, so we'll keep that one in the fleet as well. So this does, just to recap, it seats 14, no CDL required to operate, so that gives us a broader range of employees to hire to drive the vehicle. From the date of order, this one only takes 45 days to build and deliver. This one does cost $74,000 and the funding source is coming from the general fund or the Transit Department budget. Our next one's a little bit larger. It's called an Arbach Spirit of Freedom. This one holds 14 passengers, it's 24 feet long, and it is ADA accessible. So one of the goals that we had was trying to make this, again, build on technology for everything we can and try to be modern. So this has no lifts. So we're gonna get eventually away from vehicles with anything with hydraulic lifts. This is what they have, a low floor, and so there's no lift. It's lowered, floor is about three to four inches lower than a regular bus, so it's even with the curbs and sidewalks when we pull up. And this one actually has a 30-degree angle of the ramp, so it allows for the wheelchair access or walk, people to walk in, more area to turn around and load their wheelchairs. And this does take six months to build and deliver from the order date and cost on this is $124,000. City's match on this is $18,000 and this will come from, again, the Transit Department's budget or the general fund. And the funding source of this is actually our 5307 FTA portments. The other one is coming from our Transit Care Act funding. So we're gonna get two buses, brand-new buses, 2021s, that total cost is $198,000 for $18,000. This was the van that used to be, this is our 2015 Ford Transit that, this was the one we're using for Have Some Mobility as one of the backups. And just to, we kinda gave it a different look, a rebrand, because this had the Have Some Mobility logo on it, but once the system gets going, when we're ready to deploy, we'll have a contest for branding the system, branding the route, and probably changing the logos or the branding. But this one was a good one just to get it out there and we've been driving it every day out just to get, get the name out there. But this will actually be our backup one when we start doing our fixed route. And if somebody needs a wheelchair and isn't available to come to the bus stops, we'll send one of these out and that'll be under complimentary para transit. And so we're about in our sixth month now of implementation plan. This council signed and adopted the, our plan in January 28th. We had started off, you know, pretty good and then we had our pandemic. But during this time, keeping Have Some Mobility operational and working with different agencies within the state, we were, I continue to work with the FTA and getting our funding guaranteed coming in. And then we were awarded that Transit Care Act fund earlier in the year as well. So there's one other project that we need to be, have successful launch next year is we are currently finishing up, or we have finished up, an RFP for a dispatch solution. And again, like, like I was talking about last year, when we had the transit plan study in place, is we are definitely a unique community, so we wanna have a flexible transit. We're gonna have four layers of transit eventually in the city, so Have Some Mobility's still gonna be there. We'll have a fixed route, we'll have our complimentary para transit, and the final component will be our micro-transit. So these are all gonna be run from one-stop implementation piece, a transit solution. And so we're gonna get ready for that and we'll probably come back to Council in December, January with a contract, once we get all of, all the people back from the RFP and see which one we decide on, so. Any questions?
Yeah, great presentation, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions? Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. Patrick, the one bus is obviously, you'll be able to pick up and deliver people that are, have mobility issues and they're using chairs. How many chairs can they put at a time on that bus? Is it limited to just one chair and the rest are seats or can we?
No, the Arbach bus holds two in the front and there's plenty of room, so, so they fit right in the front, there's no lift, they just come in, there's plenty of room for them to turn around. And when those seats are, when there's no wheelchairs in there, the seats fold out. So those are the extra two seats for riders. So both these vehicles hold 14 people. The Arbach, the larger bus, holds two wheelchairs. The reason why we're looking at getting this smaller one, the narrow body, is because in the next eight to 10 months, we have to collect a lot of data. So right now, we're currently making pilot runs up and down downtown circulators. So we're gonna have different ones and what we'll do is we'll combine them together once we understand where the points are of most interest. And plus, it's gonna let us look at the winter visitors versus the summer visitors. So that'll all, finally, get to that final piece when we get into July of next year is when we're probably gonna do the full launch. And that's when we'll be able to say, hey, these are the bus routes, these are the, bus routes are gonna have a kiosk. And we have a couple of areas that we're looking at potential to be our hub and one's gonna be in the Pima Wash parking lot. So that's more of a centralized hub and it's actually a good spot. So that's probably gonna be one of them. The other one's gonna be down on Paseo del Sol and London Bridge Road. The city owns some lots there and I think that'll be our, in the middle of, end-of-town route, so then we can pick up at all the hotels and everything else, but have a hub there that people can go meet the buses there and pick them out, so. It's coming along. It just, it's, you know, when we said this, it was gonna be about a 36-month implementation. So even though we had the pandemic behind the scenes, we were still working on it. And, and Jeanette's, you know, helped me get over the finish line with the funding is because it takes a lot of work and we're, Jess and I were on speak-out today and we were talking about the reporting behind federal grants is way more intense than there is for state. So now that we have the funding now, it, you know, it's gonna be years to report on this to make sure that we're meeting the requirements and mandates of the FTA.
Thank you, I appreciate that and I appreciate you really watching and ensuring that we're gonna be able to take care of our residents that have mobility issues too. So, thank you.
Oh, definitely, yes, yes. Okay. So that'll all finally get to that final piece when we get into July of next year is when we're probably going to do the full launch. And that's when we'll be able to say, hey, these are the bus routes. These are the bus routes are going to have a kiosk. And we have a couple of areas that we're looking at potential to be our hub, and one's going to be in the Pima Wash parking lot. So that's more of a centralized hub and it's actually a good spot. So that's probably going to be one of them. The other one's going to be down on Paseo del Sol and London Bridge Road. The city owns some lots there and I think that'll be our, in the middle of, end-of-town route. So then we can pick up at all the hotels and everything else, but have a hub there that people can go meet the buses there and pick them out, so. It's coming along. It's just, you know, when we said this, it was going to be about a 36-month implementation. So even though we had the pandemic, behind the scenes, we're still working on it. And Jeanette's, you know, helped me get over the finish line with the funding is because it takes a lot of work. And Jess and I were on Speak Out today and we were talking about the reporting behind federal grants is way more intense than there is for states. So now that we have the funding now, you know, it's going to be years to report on this to make sure that we're meeting the requirements and mandates of the FTA.
Thank you. I appreciate that and I appreciate you really watching and ensuring that we're going to be able to take care of our residents that have mobility issues.
Yes. Okay.
Great. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Cypress? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none in person, we'll close the in-person public hearing, but we did receive a comment via cityclerk@lhcaz.gov for the public hearing. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, this comment was received on September 22nd with a subject line of City Council Public Comments. I am unable to attend in person tonight, but wanted to express my support of our local transit system and specifically the value of wheelchair-accessible buses. I believe our community leaders have taken a proactive and thoughtful analysis regarding the needs of our city as well as the important demographic of our senior winter visitors. As a wheelchair user myself, I know that the drivers at Havasu Mobility place passenger safety, security, comfort, and well-being as their top priority. With some people needing a longer recovery time from COVID, American Baby Boomers booming and the growth of our city, the timing for these changes couldn't be better. Thank you. Submitted by Patricia Perez.
Thank you. That concludes our written comments, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any thoughts from council? Councilmember Dolan?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve the purchase of two buses from Creative Bus on the Arizona State Contract in the amount of $197,192.00.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Groh?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cypress. Good work. And welcome to that side of the building, Jeanette. All right, moving on to item nine, current events. Do any councilmembers have any current council committee reports? All right, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. I just wanted to give you, Mr. Mayor, and the council and the citizens an update on the LHC Resource Alliance since they have contributed the $250,000 worth of CARES Act dollars. So as of today, well, just today, excuse me, we did an additional nine businesses and awarded $69,398 in grants. So to date, since we started the LHC Resource Alliance, we have helped 44 businesses keep their doors open for a total of $130,801. That's $114,551 in CARES dollars and $16,250 in donations from our citizens. And we've also helped 180 individuals pay their bills for a total of $31,160, all people that have been affected by the COVID-19. In addition to that, the Better Business Bureau has issued an additional 12 grants in the tune of $500 to $1,000 for each one of those grants. The Chamber is fielding the calls and being a champion for our local businesses. And the Food Bank has done 488,815 pounds of food, 37% increase over last year from people who've been affected by COVID. And that equals 368,000 meals that our local food bank has given during this pandemic. So that's it for my report. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Good work. Thank you so much for helping to administer that. Any other council committee reports? All right, we'll move on to item 10, which is our final call to the public. Again, this is the opportunity where citizens can address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Comments are three minutes or less, light indicator box up front. Bonnie, if you could just state your name and make sure the microphone's close to your mouth. Perfect. Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just wanted to address you. I would listen to all the comments that people were making earlier. And you said that Bullhead City allowed their city council or their city mandate to expire and that you could not rescind your mandate. But the difference between expired and rescind is that if you rescind it, you revoke it, cancel, or repeal. So I just want to keep that in mind that you can rescind it versus letting it expire. You don't have to wait, and I know you know that. But I just wanted to say it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Would anyone else like to address the City Council at the final call to the public? All right, we'll close the in-person call to the public, but we did receive one written comment for the final call to the public. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, this comment came in on September 22nd with a subject line of City Council Public Comments. Closing call to the public. Due to the unexpected spike of virtual interaction, suddenly has had a few outages. Internet connectivity is essential to me now more than ever. In addition to shopping, I depend on my Alexa to dial the phone if I fall because my service dog, trained to bring me a phone, is getting older and transitioning herself into retirement. Our local office has been great about keeping my internet up and running, yet I still maintain the expense of a second cellphone to use as a hotspot because this is an essential utility for me. I am optimistic that this is a temporary issue, but wanted to mention it. Thank you. Submitted by Patricia Perez.
Thank you. All right, that is our final written comment as well, so we'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Item 11 is future meetings. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. It's a regular meeting. And then followed with another meeting on Tuesday, October 27th, 2020 at 6:00 PM is a regular meeting. Item 12 is future discussion items. Are there any councilmembers having future discussion items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do ask that if we were to extend the mask mandate past October 15th, I'd ask that it would come to council as an agenda item. But that's if. If something happens for them, then it doesn't need to come to council, but.
Yeah, thank you. So I've publicly stated already, if the extension were to be deemed an option, that we would come back to council. So if that suffices for council, we can do it in that action. So, does that work? Okay. Perfect. All right, I'm just trying to get to the screen just to make sure. Councilmember Groh and Councilmember Lynn, does that work for you as well?
Yes.
Okay. I can see you now, so, okay.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item 13, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, a second from Councilmember McCoy. Be kind, everyone. Thank you for being here and thank you for participating. Have a good night.